I guess video, I'm looking at him so I can see that he's here. Board Communications, Pam, is there anything you'd like to tell us about?
Sure. We've been meeting with our Business Recovery Group, that's all on track. We're looking at the, and Jerry, you'll include part of this, Commissioner Willie, in your presentation, right?
Go ahead, you can do it.
Well, what we're doing right now is that we're, we've got the 10 million that is going out to the cities and to unincorporated Washington County. That's underway, the BRCs are doing well. We are now looking at our $2 million bucket in relationship to PPE, childcare, and workforce development, so we've been discussing that a lot. Last week, I had a fun week. I was the Storytime Reader for Westlope Library on Zoom, and it was, it was really fun. So, we had little kids there, under about five years old, and it included my granddaughter. So, it was, it was fun. We had a good time, and it's so inspiring to see our librarians and to see the work that they're doing with kids and just what professionals they are. The books that I read, I asked if they would be focused on current societal issues, and the librarians did a great job of picking some books for me to read. I read three of them. So, it was, it was great, along with finger play and songs and all sorts of things. That was right up there with all the other work we do as commissioners.
Yeah, it's higher. Jerry, did you want to add?
I really don't have anything to add to that, with the exception of I spent my Fourth of July with my six-year-old grandson for his very first fireworks. And so, we'd bought in some little sparkler things and things like that to keep it pretty low-key, but it was fun. He was so pumped. But yeah, so that's what we did, and last week was a pretty light week. It was relaxing.
It was nice. Dick, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can't hardly hear you, just fine.
Anything you want to?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't have much to report. We've got a couple of important agenda items, so I certainly wanted to attend today's meeting. I'm talking to you from Glen Eden Worldmark Resorts, and we're pretty well isolated from everybody else, trying to spend a couple of quiet days on the coast before we head back Thursday morning.
Great, good to see you.
Thank you.
Two things to report. One is we had a Clean Water Institute meeting. That's a separate nonprofit that was designed to do certain kinds of work that CWS was not set up to do. It's a very small organization, meaning, you know, budget's a little over $100,000, which is pretty small. They have committed $15,000 out of their very small budget in the hopes that they would get CARES reimbursement to buy face masks. They can buy them very, very reasonably abroad. Diane is very involved in that, as well as Ting, I think, from Clean Water Service, and she's fluent in Chinese, so it's helpful to have her negotiate overseas. The ultimate goal, for those who may agree or disagree, is that the face masks are going to be with us a long, long time. I don't think it's just in the short run. And so, if we can provide a steady stream to help our businesses and chambers and just the general public, it would be important. But for my two colleagues on my right and left, we certainly would like to look at some CARES money, but I would just prompt CLU and the staff to take a look at, when Catherine and I were dealing with the buckets, they're expending it, we have $64 million. It was a total that was in the category of public health. $10 million was going to the cities and special districts. $54 million was going to, I think, a lot of it to PPE equipment. So, instead of taking out of the good works of, you know, what Jerry and Pam are doing, isn't there money? We need, if we want to get into production of these things, you say, well, why would we do that? So that we can keep a supply coming at about a third the cost, we can buy them anywhere. We're going to need, you know, $100,000, $200,000, easy. And so, that's for equipment. And the idea is that, I mean, this is Diane, I give her a lot of credit, would be to hire folks from groups that employ folks who are a little disadvantaged, which was Work Systems, Inc., and produce masks and shields. So, it's a wonderful program. It's a big, big win, and I've talked to at least two or three of you on the board, and they are enthusiastic, depending on the money and where it's coming from. So, can you take a look? And I don't think it just should come out of the business group, that's, I mean, if there's money.
Sure, Commissioner Rogers, we will look into that.
Great.
And we also, we've been talking in our group about the work that CWI is doing, so we're very well aware of it. We're looking at how we can support. We'd also like to know from Clean Water Services what the supply of hand sanitizer is, so that we're aware of what the needs are, you know, from the community standpoint and what the possibilities are through Clean Water Services. And we also need to talk with Marnie Kyle about the, how the migrant workers are getting PPE as well, and what needs there might be in that, in that group. So, please keep that in mind.
The other thing that I've asked to, been asked to speak, I think it's Thursday night in regard to moving on, and, pardon me?
Get Moving.
Get Moving, I'm, yeah, I didn't know what my mind is. I said to change the name, I always think of 2020, but that's okay. I wanted to bring before the board, I'd like to add a couple of comments to it, and if that's not acceptable, then one of you might be better to present. I'm totally supportive of the project list, and we should. I mean, that was, we agreed to as a board. Now, I'm aware that both at NIKE, they called me directly, as well as PBA, are having huge hesitations. NIKE has opposed at this point, or saying they're going to be, and PBA is saying, let's shift the dates. The only message I think we should say is to ask our folks with Metro or colleagues there to be sensitive as to, you know, where the taxes come from and to take a look. And if they've done that, they've done that, but they, I don't think it hurts to add, but if you don't want that added, I mean, that's the only way I feel comfortable doing it. But I just wonder, you do want to do it? I know you're officiating, so you're not in a good position.
Well, I'd like to just make a comment about that. I think that, I just want to clarify that I've also been talking with the business community about Get Moving 2020, and I want to make it clear that the issues with the business community are not related to the projects or to the project list. It's to, it's related to the funding mechanism.
Payroll tax.
The payroll tax. So, I just wanted to clarify that, that difference. And I also wanted to point out that the task force that I was co-chair of, we were not involved in the funding mechanism selection process, that that was something that Metro has done independently. So, I, just so that everyone knows, that there are separate issues, but the business community does have concerns. And Commissioner Rogers, I think it's appropriate if you, if you mention that you would hope that the, that the Metro Council works with the business community to the degree possible to minimize the impact.
Yeah, I told everyone, I'm totally supportive of the projects. It's a great project list, it's just a matter of where do you get the funds? How do you feel about that?
Well, I would agree with, with that, certainly with that conversation. Honestly, my sense is payroll tax is the only thing that's left.
It is.
And so, it might be a tough battle, either at the polls or just in that conversation, but since we've done the Here Together initiative already, I think payroll tax is it.
That's what I've said, I don't know that there's any other alternative, but at least we should deliver a message. Dick, did you have anything you want to add?
No, not this time, thank you for asking, right.
Okay, well, then I guess I don't feel funny about doing it, I just didn't want to add something and say I'm totally supportive, and I understand that Pam's group was indeed only charged with, with looking at the projects, and she didn't, and they did a great job. So, it's, it's not that issue, it's Metro and how they fund, so. Okay, I saw Diane mark, but are you going to give the report? She was driving, there she is.
I saw Diane as well, so I'm going to let her step in first.
Hi, it sounds like there's some questions about our endeavor to try to get some cost-effective and affordable face masks in. So, there's two strategies that I'm working on. The very first strategy is to get an import line into the Washington County. I have to say, the import market is very fluid. I mean, there was access to 50,000 masks that just dried up this morning, so I'm actively looking for multiple vendors, because our goal is to get some high-quality ones. There's a lot of really poor-quality ones that are on the market, so we're very careful about finding reputable vendors. But the, there's also access to cost-effective cloth masks that we're also trying to source. So, that's strategy one, getting masks into Washington County, so our businesses and folks, our institutions have access to them, so they can be reopening. The second strategy is to begin developing a local production supply line. I'm very concerned about the supply of masks as we go into the fall. So, I'm looking at two strategies for local production. The first one is more of a semi-automated, but more of a manual type of mask-making, and the key piece of this is actually sourcing the non-woven fabric to be able to do it. So, I've identified all of the technology that I'm going to summarize for the board, probably by Friday, probably early Monday, I can get it to the board. Right now, I'm working on pricing and talking to various manufacturers of the equipment. The second strategy of local production is actually a fully automated line. There are these lines that essentially can put out a million masks a week, and that's certainly a decision point beyond getting the ability to make them in a semi-automatic way. So, those are the two strategies I'm working on, and I'll have more costing information, hopefully, from the vendors by this Friday. I have to also say, the supply chain for the equipment is very tight. Literally, some of this equipment is available now, some of it is going to be available in four weeks. So, it's just, it's an interesting time period that we're in, trying to get cost-effective face coverings for folks.
Diane, would you also comment to both Commissioner Trese and Willie, we're asking about hand sanitizer? The group that they're involved with is asking what that supply would be, and what would that cost us to get that up and moving?
Oh, okay, so I can talk to our Clean Water Services lab folks and get some actual costing of the hand sanitizer. We could also work with some local vendors. There's distilleries that are making the source of the alcohol. That's really the limiting factor right now, is the isopropyl alcohol at about 70% concentration. So, we can look at the supply line for isopropyl alcohol, yeah. So, I can add that to the pricing for the board.
Okay, and what, one more final question before I move off, is that both commissioners to my right and left were asking, what, what would it cost us to get into the mass production business? I mean, we know we've spent $15,000 out of CWI yesterday, which we're looking, hopefully, get that reimbursed by CARES, but what would it cost in terms of equipment? Because they have some immediate needs for getting information.
You know, I think for the semi-automatic line, you know, the material cost alone to bring in the non-woven fabric is on the order of $50,000 for the fabric. That's essentially a ton of fabric that would make a million masks. So, when you're getting into this non-woven fabric, you're ordering in very large quantities. So, that's just materials alone. For the equipment, you know, we're looking at an ultrasonic seam welder for essentially sewing on the non-woven fabric. Those, I don't have a pricing yet, but my gut is any industrial sort of sewing, sewing appliance is probably on the order of $10,000 or so. If you're looking at the fully automated line, I do have a quote, and that quote's at $299,000 to make essentially the million masks a week. The other thing that I'm working on is our desire for sanitizing of these masks. A lot of the masks that come are not, they're non-sanitized, so there is a cost-effective way to sanitize them, essentially by using sanitizers that the hockey equipment is sanitized, and if you believe it or not. And I learned this technology from the GM manufacturing company that's making, they converted to making masks for the medical field. So, that's sort of the tension, you know, right now, the supply chains in the U.S. are focused on medical PPE. And so, really, our goal is to focus on more of the cost-effective PPE for, that's non-medical. So, that, that's sort of the order of magnitude. So, you would need this automated mask-making line, you would need the sanitizers, we're getting quotes on that, and we would need a packaging equipment, and we're getting quotes on that right now. So, that's a fully automated line. I think you could expect full startup of fully automatic, probably on the order of $400,000 by the time you buy the initial materials and get everything set up.
Could I ask?
Yes, could I ask you a question, Diane? Have you done, put together like a business plan in relationship to the need, the cost, and distribution, those types of pieces as well?
Yes, that's what we're working on right now. Right now, it would be helpful if I understood from the, the chambers, if they could order masks tomorrow, what would they order? So, we're going to be working on that to get the actual initial quantities that we could fulfill by importing, and then their ongoing needs throughout the emergency. That would be the goal.
Diane, we can communicate directly with the BRCs, that would probably be the best source right now, and they are at our larger chambers as well as Adelante Mujeres. So, we can get that information to you, I would guess, by today or tomorrow.
That'd be fabulous. And then, so it's initial need and then ongoing need, and then I can match up pricing with that. What I found with the face, fabric face coverings, most of them are in the $18 each sort of range. I found some for cheaper on Etsy, but the quality was questionable because of the way it was constructed. So, the whole goal is to bring in well-constructed cloth masks that meet the CDC recommendations of two ply and the ability to put a filter in it for $5 or less. My goal is to get it down to a buck or so. So, I'm still sourcing supply right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Yeah, I hope that's helpful. Sorry, I'm on the phone, going to places and trying to get this mass production defined for, for all of you.
Thank you, and I know it's preliminary, but it's exciting. Thank you for all your work.
Yeah.
Steve Rhodes, our interim manager, is on vacation, which is nice, and Sia Lindstrom will be sitting in. What have you got?
And I have, good morning. I have two things for you. One, Steve is on vacation this week, so please let me know if you need anything while he's out. He's asked me to cover for him. I'm going to be on vacation next week, and so, next week Ruth will be sitting in for you. Your extended work session happens to be everything in her portfolio, so that works out really well. And so, I appreciate Ruth sitting in for us. Thing two is the T4T staff listening sessions around racial equity are coming up, and T4T is Training for Transformations. One of the listening sessions, as you all know, is a chance for staff to talk to leadership. That is scheduled for next Monday, the 13th, from 10 to noon. And Alan is advising us on how to handle that so that it stays focused on staff and balances the public meeting requirements. So, I'll let him talk about that.
Sure, thank you, Sia. So, yes, in order to make this a safe space for staff, that we'd recommend that you just have two commissioners at a time, attend the T4T meetings so that you be able to actually respond to some of the questions if you needed to, and it would not be a public meeting. We're concerned that staff wouldn't feel comfortable in communicating with you if it was a regular public meeting where there's have to be minutes, and so we want to make it a safe place for staff, so that's our recommendation. And you know, if you wanted to make it a public meeting, we could advertise it and open it up to the public to listen. The public would not get a chance to talk, because it's only a chance for the staff to talk about these, these important issues, so.
I think the question for you all is, are you comfortable limiting it to just two board members so that we can keep it focused on staff? Okay. And do you want to let us know now, the two board members, or would you like to select that later? It's next Monday, so you won't be meeting again. Okay.
I'd be happy, I would be happy to attend on Monday. I think I've, I sent an email a few minutes ago saying that I would be available then.
Pam was the first volunteer, who's the second?
Dick.
Oh, do you want to, Dick?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right, there you go.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah.
And the only other thing I have is I'll be out on vacation Wednesday through Saturday of this week.
This week. This week. Thank you. All right.
I have one other thing. I forgot to mention that I did have a very nice conversation with Tanya and Angie, and I called to congratulate her and talked about her moving out here. She's coming, I think, the end of this week with her daughter to go on a house hunting trip, so things, I, things are moving forward, and she's really very excited about it. That's, it was a good conversation.
So, just to go back to the T4T, since only two of our commissioners are going to be there, how's the communication going to come back around to the rest of us?
Sure. So, T4T, the consultants will be summarizing themes out of these and sharing them with all of us. So, there will be a mechanism to get learnings from staff.
And the commissioners will not be making presentations, this is, this is all ears, right?
Correct, yes, that's, the consultants are emphasizing that we are in listening mode as leadership. Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Commissioner, can I add one other thing?
Yeah, please.
I wanted to, in addition to what Diane wanted to say, I wanted to update you on one issue. We met with, Jack Liang and I met with staff at Community Action yesterday to begin looking at how we would implement the Utility Rate Assistance Program. So, that is who we've chosen to work with in terms of distribution to support water, sewer, and stormwater rates. We're meeting with all those billers, the cities and the, and the special service districts later this week to figure out both the policies as well as kind of the business processes to get that money into the hands of people that have been impacted by COVID.
Is there anything else, Mark? I didn't mean to cut you off.
No worries.
We went to Diane, okay. Already, we have a consent agenda, which had an award bid that got changed slightly. Is there any questions on any of our consent agenda today? Not very many items. And we have a COVID-19 update, Marty, I'd be, I guess, you're just on there all the time. Yeah. And then we have two actions, and it'd be no surprise, I'm opposed to one of them, and I'll make a couple of comments, but that's about it. Anything else? Okay. I think we're now ready for our update from our Government Relations staff. I see two of them, three of them. So, who's starting off? Elizabeth, are you in?
I am. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep, perfect.
Paige is on vacation today, so it's just the three of us. I have just a couple of items for you. Not long before this meeting, I sent an email to you all with a letter. This is part of the regional federal effort that is being led by Washington County to get additional investment from, from Congress. Back in May, I'll remind you all that you adopted a COVID-19-related legislative addendum, and so this falls squarely within the guidelines that you provided for us. So, we're not looking for a thumbs up, per se, but we do want you to have a chance to take a look at it, provide any edits or comments. If you have concerns, let us know. You've got it now, and we're going to ask for those by Thursday with the goal of adding the Washington County logo, along with the regional, the logo of our regional partners by Friday, and moving that along. So, that's the first piece of my update. As always, if you have any questions, if you want to participate more fully, if you want to get down to any of the conversations that the GR team has about this, including with our, our federal partners at BSA, let, just feel free to let me know. In terms of our state legislative agenda, GR is working with their departments within their portfolio. I think things there are going very well. People seem to be responding really positively to the legislative concept worksheet we have. I think I have meetings with just a few of the commissioners. So, again, if you want to meet and talk about either ideas you have for the legislature or just get sort of some one-on-one time with the GR team, just let me know, and we'll work with Kathy or your schedule to get that together. Finally, I just wanted to draw attention to an email sent, I think it was yesterday, about the community listening sessions and the community investment conversation, which is formerly known as the Budget Listening Tour. We've not settled on the final name for that. The email explains everything you need, but want to again, make myself available if you have any questions about either of those series of community conversations. I think the planning on those is coming along well, and I should, I hope, in the next week or two, have a full schedule for you all and opportunities to engage. Ajit and Erin are here to give you both an update on what happened down in Salem last week or the week before, the week before, as well. Erin will give you some timeline, looking ahead of what you can expect for special session. Thanks.
So, good morning, Commissioner Rogers. Good morning, Commissioner Trese and Willie. For the record, this is Ajit Nargi, your Government Relations Manager, covering public safety and general government. So, as you know, the special session was held the week before last.
Good morning, by the way, Ajit.
Dick is on the line, too.
Oh, good morning, Commissioner. You threw me off there, you threw me off. So, as we know, six bills were passed, and I'm going to focus on a couple of them that have a bit of a larger effect on the county, if you will. In the Government Relations memo that we pushed out last week, there's also a bill tracker document that takes a little bit of a deeper dive on the bills, and as always, if you want to have a deeper discussion with any of these policies that pertain to public safety or general government, just give me a call, and we can certainly have those one-on-one, and I'm more than willing to take questions after I get through my presentation this morning. So, let me start off by looking back at the short session of 2020. That particular session came to a grinding halt due to the walkout. My major priority was community correction. Statewide, there was a $25 million hole. Washington County, we were looking at about a $1.2 million hole. The deficit remains, and if anything, that deficit's been exacerbated by COVID-19 because of the upfront expenses we've had in community corrections. And so, one of the threads that I'm seeing in this, this, this desire, this community desire, this legislative desire, this national desire, if you will, to create policing reform, is that when you think about community-based policing and you think about community corrections, probation and parole really are that place that's already sort of, has the infrastructure to do more of that community policing, right? And so, one of the strategies that I'm going to be using in the long session is, yes, as a county, yes, we are open to reform, especially if it's funded by the state so that we can effectively get it done. But at the same time, we don't want to lose sight of the effective programs that we have, because we have great outcomes in community corrections when it comes to people reintegrating themselves in the community and also dealing with drug and alcohol addiction. And so, this is something that I'll be working closely with the governor's office, because this, this notion of reforming, police reform, and accountability measures, X, Y, Z, is sort of dovetails into the reform that the governor's office was already alluding to during the short session in 2020 around community corrections. And so, if you remember, when we started this whole, when COVID really was coming into the fray, I was speaking about crises and opportunities, and I definitely want to use this as an opportunity to ensure that community corrections gets the funding it deserves and needs moving forward, and that we don't get lost in the mix of sort of progressive policies that actually undercut the good work that we've been doing all these years. So, there's that, we still have that. Now, what happened in the special session about two weeks ago? Like I said, six bills were passed. I want to take a little bit of a deeper dive on two of them. The first one is House Bill 4201. This bill began essentially as a way for the Attorney General to conduct investigations by local law enforcement where use of force is implicated. The way that's done now is that the local DA does that investigation. So, the thinking is that by having the Attorney General do the investigation, you have, you have more transparency, and there's not a connection between, because often, local law enforcement and the DA, they know each other, right? It's plausible there could be pre-existing relationships. So, that's sort of the thinking there. However, this bill got pushed into a joint committee, and so the joint committee was providing recommendations to the legislature prior to the upcoming long 2021 session, legislative session. The reason I want to flag this is because there could be a fiscal impact for the county. If the Attorney General does the investigation, if that is the recommendation that the joint committee provides, well, my question is, who is going to be paying for that investigation? There is already precedent where the Attorney General There is already precedent where the Attorney General does certain, handles certain cases for the county, and they then turn around and bill us. And, you know, if that's the way that the legislation is written, fine, but I think that we need to have further discussion about that. Perhaps the state should consider fully funding, staffing adequately, the Attorney General's office to equip them to handle this additional caseload if they do go that route. And I'll certainly be having those conversations with legislators as we move forward. I do think that will certainly be a central issue in regard to public safety moving into the long session. Switching gears, House Bill 4203, this is colloquially known as the Banning Chokehold Bill. The only reason I want to flag this is twofold, in a sense. One, obviously, this will have an implication on our sheriff's office in the way that they handle themselves with folks that may be in custody or not. But my question was, the way that the bill is written compared to the other five public safety bills is that it uses the language of peace officer. And peace officer historically is a very wide term. The other five bills specifically call out police officer or law enforcement. And the reason I'm flagging this is because peace officer can actually encompass probation and parole officers. And so the collective thinking with associations and a few of the attorneys I talked to about this is that this actually does not cover probation and parole officers. But I need to get more clarity around this. And so as soon as I have that, I'll be sharing that with the board. Because if it does include probation and parole officers, that's something we're going to want to know because, of course, there could be a possible liability issue there. Let me give you a law school hypothetical. Our probation and parole officers do not carry, they're not armed, they don't carry guns. So let's assume there's a particularly rowdy parolee, and the only way that the probation and parole officer can neutralize that situation is by restricting the airway to protect his or her own life. That's a situation that, you know, plausibly could happen. It's not out of the course of possibility. And so we're going to need a little bit of clarity there. The four other bills really, in my opinion, they sort of squarely are targeted towards the sheriff's office. And, you know, we can talk about those, but I really do think that hearing from the sheriff's office in terms of how those are going to be incorporated and what kind of effect they will have will be a conversation that will likely be taking place in the future. In terms of the general government side of my portfolio, I also want to talk quickly about House Bill 4210. Now, House Bill 4210, what this does is it allows that, it requires that circuit courts that are issuing fines for traffic-based offenses can no longer suspend drivers' licenses. You know, I've spoken to Judge Cross, I've spoken to a couple of other circuit judges, and there's a bit of consternation about this because we at Washington County have always used payment plans and other sort of ways to help meet people where they're at to get their bills paid. You know, a license suspension is really considered the last straw. I know some other local jurisdictions, you know, use this maybe more than we do. There is a bit of a disparate impact here because it's sort of the advocate thinking here is that, well, there's a disparate impact on people of color. If you take away their driver's license, they then can't get to their job to pay for the fine that sort of is taking away their suspension now. And that's fine. But the concern is what kind of revenue impact will we see at the circuit court level? I'm hoping that it is not that bad. I'm hoping that we can still continue to utilize flexible options to ensure that we get our revenue in a timely manner. But more to come on that as well. Those are sort of the three bills I wanted to focus on. And really, you know, switching back to public safety, Representative Bynum is Chair of the Judiciary Committee, and Representative Solomon will be the Chair of the Public Safety Committee. Both of these two are fairly progressive lawmakers when it comes to police accountability and police reform. They have endeavored with me and made it very clear to me that they will not be sort of just letting this go with the special session. They, you know, will be sort of carrying this fight into the long session. So I think we will be seeing more reform. In their own words, this is just a first step in a long conversation. That language is used time and time again. So I think moving into the long session and possibly future sessions after that, we will continue to see more bills pertaining to public safety, reform, accountability, transparency, community-based policing, the request for community oversight boards of law enforcement, requests for defunding, requests for demilitarization. I think the community listening sessions and the work that Elizabeth has so quickly and so incredibly organized is going to be axiomatic in that because we want to be responsive, but we also want to ensure that we can meet these policies, both legally and also from a funding perspective, and ensure that all of our community members are safe and getting what they need. So with that, I will take any questions.
Questions?
Well, I guess, I don't have a question, it's just a comment. I'm concerned about how legislature typically reacts in these things. So very quickly, they put together bills almost in a knee-jerk reaction fashion rather than pausing and saying, "Let's check in with our partners around the state to see what would actually be a workable solution," rather than bringing a hammer to the party. And I just, sometimes I just get a sense that they just want to pass something right now, and they don't consider the implications like you talked about, the differentiation between a peace officer and an actual officer of the law. So I guess that's my concern, and I'm happy that you're down there kind of keeping your hand on the pulse of what is going on. So I don't have any other comments other than that, other than my concerns.
Commissioner Willie, you're right on point. The sausage is being made very quickly, and it's being made very plentiful, right? And so there's just a lot of moving pieces. The one thing I will say is that a number of these bills or policies, it is not their first introduction, right? They have come up time and time again. Senator Lou Fredrick talked about how he has introduced many of these bills 15 times, 18 times, and the community need hasn't changed, it's just the bill numbers have changed, and they keep resurfacing. So I think there is that side of it as well. But you're right, the nuance and the need for nuance, especially when we're talking about these paradigm shifts in policing. I mean, even just putting aside the union issues with the discipline matrix, I mean, I purposely didn't want to get into that. There's a lot there, and you're exactly right. I think that we see that with the request for the joint committee because the Department of Justice made a very clear issue around issues around funding liability and a whole host of other equity issues that I really think were the driving factor as to why the brakes were pumped on this, and the AG isn't currently sort of doing the investigation as the legislators had intended to at the outset. So you're right on. The main thing, though, is that we are at the table, and we're part of the larger organizations and coalitions, both on the public safety side and the community side, such that I think that we're in a good position to at least know what's coming and continue to advocate for arguments.
Dick or Pam, I think you've...
Yeah, I think the only comment I make is, obviously, I can't speak to the sheriff, but I feel that these are opportunities for our board and our staff, and in particular, the Sheriff's Department, to, I think, shine. I think we're going to be positioned to be, I'm glad to hear it, that we're going to be involved, we're going to be proactive. I see this as opportunities for an agency, Sheriff's Department in particular, that has a high level of professionalism and I think is headed up by an outstanding sheriff. So I think if anyone in the state, on the county-wide level, is in a position to really shine here, I think it's Washington County.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. You know, I've got to really applaud our sheriff. He has, I think, bent over backwards to meet all sorts of folks, you know, all over our community to talk about a whole host of issues. And he is, as we all know, he's just such an approachable, kind sheriff that I really think we do have an opportunity here. And it's like I was saying at the beginning of this many months ago, you know, with crises come opportunities, and I think we can also do some community healing, too. So agreed, 100%.
Well, and if I could, I just would like to say that I think that another opportunity for you commissioners is, are those listening sessions? I think there'll be a real chance to hear, you know, what the community's interested in. And I would encourage you, I know the sheriff and the DA are also doing their own listening sessions, and I would encourage you to, you know, get yourself invited to those. I think, again, another opportunity to sort of hear that conversation firsthand and help inform how you're going to inform us on how to lobby on your behalf.
Great, thank you. Erin, are you up next?
Yes, sorry. Making sure there's no further comments on Ajit's portfolio, although you can always ask him questions instead of asking me questions, which is perfect for me. With Paige's taking a vacation, which is good and healthy, I am covering her portfolio. So if you have questions about the things that I'm about to talk about that fall into HHS or housing, I will note those questions, answer if I can. Otherwise, I will turn them over to Paige to respond to you when she comes back tomorrow. There, I'm going to touch first on a couple of moratoriums that were instituted at the legislative level that are carrying out the governor's executive orders further. First, there's a foreclosure moratorium, and second, an eviction moratorium. These kind of go hand in hand. Essentially, the legislature placed moratoriums on both foreclosures and evictions based on inability to pay because of COVID through September 30th of 2020. For purposes of evictions, it covers both residential and commercial properties. It does allow for landlords to evict for cause other than the failure to pay rent. It does not forgive the rent. It basically says you have six months after September 30th to become current. And at that time, if you fail to become current, then you can be evicted for a failure to pay rent. In addition, there are other pieces of negotiation that a landlord and a tenant can undertake under that bill. But basically, the fear is that as this extends out further, people are seeing the income levels that they're used to, and a high rate of eviction may occur if a moratorium isn't in place. However, there is also recognition that if a landlord can't receive, if a landlord is not receiving rent, they're not going to be able to make their mortgage payments. And while the federal government took care of anything that was a federally backed mortgage, there are a number of other mortgages that aren't federally backed that also need some protections to prevent those folks who are paying a mortgage from being evicted from their property through a mortgage eviction. So again, it extends a moratorium on foreclosure until September 30th. Instead of saying you have six months to pay back your arrears, it basically says you have until the end of your loan term to pay back your arrears. And so kind of the term balloon payment was made or used in discussions by the legislature, but it's more that over the course of your loan, you have time to pay back anything you were not able to pay related to COVID. There is also, so it allows homeowners to stay in their homes and commercial property landlords to maintain their commercial properties, keep them open while they're seeing possibly less in rent. There is a lot that comes with that that the baking industry did work out with the legislature to kind of make sure that everyone has the protections that they need for purposes of a foreclosure moratorium. In addition to those two separate bills, there was an omnibus coronavirus relief bill that hits two other areas that I just really quickly wanted to touch on. One is related to the collection of data called REALD. Race, ethnicity, language, and disability data is now going to be required to be collected by healthcare providers when they ask for lab testing. It's self-reported information, so the patient will provide the information related to all of those categories at their desire. But it's going to help our HHS department with having enough information to do the disaggregation of data so we have a better ability to track COVID within particular populations so that we can provide the resources that we need from a public health perspective. So HHS was supportive of this, were encouraged to have this data to give more granularity to COVID cases. And the other piece of this omnibus bill that I just wanted to briefly touch on was related to emergency shelter supersiting. We talked about House Bill 4001 during the short session. Paige and I jointly handled this issue because it's both land use and emergency shelters. And there was some funding that came with the 4001 that we weren't going to receive. That funding piece also kind of carried through into the omnibus bill, but more importantly, to our LUT department, who has been made aware of this. After the governor signs the bill, there is a 90-day permissive supersiting provision. And by permissive, I mean permissive to the applicant, not to the local government. The local government has to accept an application to turn a property into an emergency shelter and not emergency related to COVID, but emergency as in I am homeless and I need a place to stay. Over 90 days, any application that comes in cannot be viewed with relationship to land use laws, regulations, and zoning, but can be reviewed for purposes of public life safety, some other smaller provisions of land use law. And basically, the shelter is allowed to cite there barring any sort of inability for the shelter itself to meet the requirements of the legislation. That supersiting is allowed for 90 days, and any application that comes in within those 90 days and is completed, a completed application comes in within those 90 days has to be judged under the standards of that bill. And then after that 90 days, the shelter can continue to exist until such time it is not used for two years as that emergency shelter, but basically is not related to the COVID emergency, it is related to the emergency of being homeless and providing that type of shelter. So it is limited on how it will impact Washington County because it's only inside urban growth boundaries and rural residential areas, which are pretty much the urban growth boundaries is going to be where we see some of these very few rural residential parcels within Washington County. So that's what happened in the short session. I'll pause here to see if there are questions related to any of that, most of which I hope to pass on to Paige and not overstep what I don't understand.
Questions?
The other question I had was in regard to the rent forgiveness. I know it's not a forgiveness, it's a deferral. For those small landlords who are unable to maintain costs, and you mentioned mortgage, that's just one. There's obviously all kinds of other. Was there any money put into the state budget to indemnify those folks or help them with their expenses? Or was the thought that we at the local level would do it out of funds we may have received from CARES?
During this session, there was no money provided for anything essentially, except for a few key items that are not related, that they just needed funding in order to move forward to departments. If the emergency board then provides further funding, we will let you know. I don't know if there currently is a pool of funding that the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department might be pulling from. I don't know the answer to that question, but we will get back to you when we have more information. I will talk with Paige to see if there are those funding sources available for those smaller landlords related to non-mortgage costs.
Good, thank you.
And if I could, I just want to jump in. I just want to clarify on the item around the REALD data. Currently, Washington County Public Health does indeed use this system for our own data collection. Where this is particularly helpful is with healthcare providers who don't use it right now, in particular, lab results. And I was texting with Marty, so I'm going to read her text, that it's especially helpful with negatives because Washington County Public Health doesn't interview negatives. And so this will provide a fuller picture of the demographics of everyone who's testing positive and negative throughout the county, not just those directly with public health.
Thank you, Elizabeth. If there are no other questions about that short session, I'm going to do some prognostication. So everything I'm about to say is super fuzzy and looks weird in a glass ball. But there are two potential next sessions. First is another E-Board or Emergency Board meeting, which is expected in another sometime. We're hearing a lot of things, possibly this week, possibly next week. And this meeting of the E-Board is specific to, we have heard, is specific to some of the dollars that... specific to some of the dollars that were pulled out of the discussion at the last emergency board. So it was about $75 million related to some business assistance programs that needed to be rearranged, worked, and modified. So this is things like independent event centers, assistance to them, some other programs that Business Oregon has been tasked with providing, maybe changing, and also providing other types of assistance directly to some specific business organizations, including the small business development centers, to getting more funding out to assist those smaller businesses throughout the state. There are some questions that we have about how those dollars are going to be sent out, and if they're going to require us to be passed through agencies for some of those dollars, or if they're going to be giving those dollars directly to folks outside of local government. So directly to the small business development centers, directly to these institutions. All of those will be part of that E-Board package that they consider probably in the next week or so. My understanding is that negotiations are still ongoing, and no one is really clear on when that meeting will occur. However, in a bigger picture, we are also expecting another special session to occur sometime this summer. The date of this has been buried. Some people have said mid-July, some people have said late August, some people have said September. Our best guess is mid-August at this point in time. And this one is going to focus much more heavily on budget issues, and the state's budget issues in particular. As we've reported in the past, there is a significant expectation of decline in revenues coming into the state, which will have very specific impacts on the general fund and the availability to continue to provide the services that the state has provided out of the general fund, and they are going to have to readjust. In order to not do an across every department, the state level straight cut of 17%, and instead target those cuts in the budget, the legislature has to meet and make those changes. There are two things we think that will impact those potential cuts. One is if there is or is not further assistance from the federal government to the state, particularly things where they can do revenue replacement. And if they get more money to assist with COVID response, then they might be able to better balance their budget and not have to cut as much. And the other question, of course, is what the revenue picture actually is going to look like. Unfortunately, they don't have another revenue forecast expected until the end of September, but the budget squeeze is more urgent than that. So those two things are competing for timing purposes. The other reason why we think it will occur in the mid-August time period is because there were some policy questions that were raised during this first special session that were not decided at the, by the close of the session, in particularly questions around liability. And there is a work group that has been tasked with discussing what potential liability related to folks who come in and interact with either a business, a school, a local government, walking in the door, the local government, the school, the businesses followed best practices, said mask up, had their employees masked, and that person becomes ill with COVID because of a potential exposure at that location. Who carries that liability? What worker liability looks like, if they come into a space where their employer has them working under certain conditions, did they or did they not protect their employees sufficiently? That work group is, that table is being set right now. Counties are at that table and will be working with a lot of other engaged stakeholders to determine if there is a legislative solution related to that liability. The expectation is that work group won't finish its work until mid-August. Thus, we are expecting those two sessions to go hand in hand as opposed to coming in two times further. So that is my best prognostication. Take that with the ability for anyone to see the futures, grain of salt. Any questions about that?
Don't hear any. Thank you.
Great. Well, in that case, I have just two quick housekeeping items. Sorry, Aaron, unless you have something. Pardon?
I was just going to say back to Elizabeth.
So two quick housekeeping items. One, just wanted to give you an update. That staff attended a meeting with AOC District 8 colleagues to talk about AOC's new renewed effort to do some federal lobbying, and I think we're all encouraged. There's nothing in particular to share, except that I think we all agree that it feels like there's some new energy happening. You know, AOC, which is great. And finally, that while the government relations team has been on and off-site the last couple of months because of COVID, because of what will now be some changes in the office layout over the next couple of months and some construction, they now have been asked to stay off-site for the next two to three months for that construction. And so I just want to really encourage you to use emails and phone and scheduling if you want to get in touch with Aaron Ajit or Paige, as their office will not exist for a little while. So that's it from us.
Let me just jump in here just briefly. I did meet with our new AOC Director, Ms. Furman, and Commissioner Martha Schrader, and Aaron Doyle was in on that conference as well as myself. No one there from Oldham County. Nothing really remarkable really transpired, but we all agreed that we are concerned about unfunded mandates, and there's a lot of things that we can agree on with rural and urban counties. That was just sort of the gist of it, really. It was about, it was a half-hour conversation. And I'm grateful for Aaron taking notes. I may have missed something, but I don't think anything remarkable happened. Just want to share that. Thank you for your report, Elizabeth, because that triggered my recollection last week. I did sat in on that conference on behalf of the rest of the board members. And I don't really have anything remarkable to report back to any of you that you didn't already know.
Great. Well, I do want to say, I appreciate you attending that meeting. I mean, we have been beating this drum for the last year and a half, that AOC does best when we focus on things that we all have in common as counties, like things like unfunded mandates, which may seem obvious, I think, as we talk through it. But I think really provides an opportunity for AOC to leverage, you know, the 36 counties and the representation there. So we're going to continue to encourage them to find places where we have in common, so we have the full complement of the county's support behind the different policy efforts. I think we've taken our 30 minutes. So thanks, everyone, and please use our emails and phones.
Commissioner Orelli has a question.
I just, it's not necessarily a question for you. I'm going to call on Jack, who's in the audience here, and I'm going to see if he's paying attention or if he's falling asleep back there. But I guess I'm focused a little bit on our process for our budget once we know where the state is going. And we're not going to be able to wait till the end of September and the revenue forecasts, and certainly for the state to figure out how much money they don't have and those kinds of things. So what is our plan for, I guess, not only looking at our budget revisions that need to be done, but what's the process of kind of keeping up with the state of Oregon and what they're anticipating? And I don't know, Aaron, if you, if this falls under your bailiwick or who, but I can't imagine the state waiting until October to make their changes in their budget. So how are we all going to coordinate all of this?
So there are a few things that we're doing. Good morning, Commissioners. There are a few things that we're doing right now. One thing is that we're contacting all of our department regarding what they hear, actually, from the state revenue information. There's actually a lot of information that's being floated around. Nothing's really final yet, but our department has some anticipated informations, and we're trying to collect all that into a central financial planning structure. At the same time, we're also looking at our 1920 budget and actuals, actually, to look at where our financial ends. And that will get us to a good place in terms of financial planning when it comes to beginning fund balance on that. And we're updating our indicators and assumptions in the general fund forecast related with the general fund. That will give us a picture on the taxes and on other departmental revenues that we're receiving. So there's a, we're in the process of basically laying out the platform for the county's internal discussions with sufficient information, as much as we have at this point. We won't have, obviously, we won't be able to predict the future 100%, but that's kind of our process of doing our best in looking out into the new fiscal year.
So when do you anticipate that maybe we, as a commission, would get our first snapshot of what that looks like?
I'd have to take a look at the timeline a little bit. I know that we're staying fairly busy in the next month or so, so I anticipate it will be sometime in September.
It's kind of what I expected, but yeah, I wanted to make sure that, I guess, we're just kept abreast of how all of that is progressing.
Thank you. Thank you for that question. And I want to assure you that while we haven't talked about it in the work session for a while, we are definitely continuing to work on our financial planning behind the scenes with the team.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, no problem.
Elizabeth, I'm not sure if this is a question for you guys, but I don't know where we are with the census right now. I don't know what's happening, and I'd just like to get an update about where that is. Sia is leaning forward. I suspect that she knows something here. The other thing, the other question, excuse me?
That'll be Amanda and Philip.
Okay. The other question I have is for Aaron, and you talked about a work group that was involved on the liability-related issues, the COVID liability-related issues. Who's on that work group?
We don't know yet. It's still being
It's being formed.
Created.
Yeah.
It's still being formed. My understanding is that representation of workers, trial attorneys, counties, businesses, and probably schools at a minimum will be at the table. But they're trying to determine the breadth of what's going to be covered, and therefore the breadth of participation. But my understanding is folks from all sides of the conversation will be in attendance.
Good. Thank you. It's an important issue.
Commissioner Teresa, I was going to, I missed being appointed to that committee by about 30 minutes. They were trying to race through to get someone from the county councils. And I heard that there is, and one of the county councils from Marion County will be on that committee, so.
Okay.
And Commissioner Teresa, related to the census, you probably have heard that the deadline for the census has been extended to October. But the strategies for census outreach obviously have changed dramatically in the face of COVID. And we are putting Amanda on the spot, but I would welcome her up to the table just to give us a brief update. She and Philip are taking the lead for the county's census efforts and
Before you do that, just let me ask you, Marnie, how long is your presentation?
Yes.
Well, I thought you on a work session, you had something. Oh, okay. Thank you. Go ahead. I just didn't want to, because I knew you were coming back at the agenda.
I think the only comment I'd like to make just briefly is kind of the less seemingly side of the legislature. I think we have a good cause, but, you know, we're not writing checks. The Oregon Trial Lawyers Association writes huge checks. So they're going to be a big player in these negotiations. We will have to be very careful.
So in regards to the census, as Sia mentioned, the date has been moved back, the final date to the end of October. What we're hearing right now is that we're looking at July 16th as the US Census is looking at July 16th as a substitute census day. Initially, that was supposed to be April 1st. And so we just met with our community partners yesterday. We just learned that yesterday. So we met with community partners yesterday to talk about what that, you know, what types of things they're thinking about in terms of mostly social media push and, you know, virtual world things, no actual events. So we're continuing to talk to them about what that might look like and what role we can play there. Just as an update, Washington County is at 72.4%. The rest of the state is in the high 60s percent in terms of response rate. We only have two tracks in the county. There are 83, I think they said, in the state of Oregon, and two of those in the county that are below 20%, one in the Tiger Triangle area, and then one in Hillsborough area. And so we're talking to the census about how to strategize around that. They are looking at launching some mobile, mobile counting trailers, essentially, people to go out and really do some door-to-door work. And they're training their enumerators right now to go out into the community as well, beyond those two tracks, but really some targeted efforts in those two tracks. And we're talking with Tiger and Hillsborough about that as well, and community partners.
Thank you.
About the Tiger Triangle. I have a business in there, and all 50 people who live in there, it might be hard to get to them. I don't know. It's, the whole landscape is changing. All of the homes are gone, and mainly businesses anymore.
Well, when you see them out and about, tell them to complete their question.
You don't see them out and about. There's too many other, yeah. I don't know how to identify them. Yeah, walking there, that'd probably be a good, yeah, good one. All right, Marnie, thank you very much to our team. We'll go on to the next topic.
Good morning, Commissioners. Marnie Kyle, Director of Health and Human Services. And I did want to just bring up on the issue you discussed this morning around face coverings and masks, that the AOC still has about 300, you know, we didn't check the inventory this morning, but approximately 350 KN95s. And we have been offering those to the business recovery centers. We're actually trying to push those out the door. And the state has offered in addition another 70,000. And the KN95 masks are similar to an N95, but they're just not medical grade. So they look similar, but they're not medical grade. So I just wanted to make sure that this board is aware of that, and Clean Water Services, as well as helping to make sure, you can help communicate to our business recovery centers that we still have those. And we would really like to push them out the door, because right now, we're storing them and managing them. So, and we have opportunity to get more.
Maybe you ought to bring them to our meeting and have us model.
We could.
Then we would advertise them.
Yes. So, but today, we're here, I'm here to introduce Tom Ingolston. Tom is our interim manager of solid waste and recycling. He's been doing a really fabulous job. And he's here to talk about, it sounds very ominous, but it's not, termination of the Lakeside compost facility franchise agreement. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tom, and I'm going to step away because I know visually it looks like we're less than six feet, and we're not, but I'll give him space.
Thanks, Marnie. Morning, Commissioners. So yes, as Marnie mentioned, I'm here today to give you all an update on the proposed termination of the Lakeside Reclamation Compost Facilities franchise agreement. This is a longstanding agreement facility that's, that is off Farmington, sorry, Shoals Ferry off Grabhorn Road. It's been in existence for a long time. Alan reminded me that we've been going back and forth with Lakeside Reclamation and Grabhorn Inc., the owner, for a long time over land use issues and the landfill that's now closed, and DQ has a settlement on that landfill. Well, Mr. Grabhorn passed away in 2018, and his estate was passed on to his daughter and Ms. Andrea Di Amico. Ms. Di Amico does not want to work in the compost business anymore. She does not want to operate the facility anymore, so she has requested closure of that facility and an end to the franchise agreement they have with the county. They started with Oregon DQ that holds a compost facility permit with them. And in late February, DQ copied us on a letter that was the end termination letter of their compost facility agreement permit with the state of Oregon. We have a provision in our code, Chapter 8.08, disposal sites, that says if an agency of jurisdiction terminates its authorization of a disposal site, we may as well. We've talked with county council about how we should proceed with this request from Ms. Di Amico, and council suggests that we utilize that provision in code to say that because the termination happened on the DQ agreement, we will now terminate ours. So we're kind of here just to give you a heads up, because as Marnie mentioned, revocation/termination of agreements sounds really heavy when you put it on an agenda item, and we wanted to make sure you all knew what was going on. Ms. Di Amico is requesting this. I think the county, Solid Waste and Recycling, supports this. The facility has not been accepting material for several years, and they've just been working to sell the product off the site and clean it up. DQ did an inspection. Our staff went out and looked at the site. Looks great. The pile is gone. It's graded. It's spread on the property, and they sold the material. So we're just really formalizing the end of that facility through that termination of the franchise agreement. So if our request today is to get a thumbs up on coming back on the 28th of July with a consent agenda item that would authorize the termination of that agreement, and I think that would be executed upon your thumbs up through a letter with, you know, thank you.
I, what's the next steps for this property? Because, I mean, is it, can they now do development on this, or can they Because, I mean, is it, can they now do development on this, or can they do something else on this property?
It's a really good question. I don't know the next steps. They haven't planned there. They do have a closed landfill, a dry waste landfill on that property, and they have a consent agreement with the state of Oregon, and the state is managing the closure, testing for environmental remediation, testing the water quality down on the Twelton River there. So I don't know if the site is developable. I'm not sure, but I am seeing the, I drive in that way every day, and I'm seeing that it growing out that way past the high school and just north of that property now is being developed into a new development. So, yeah, I don't know what their future plans are for the site.
I think it'd be hard to develop, just simply because of landfill and all the issues. Commissioner Scouting and I, I think since our entire term on the board, we've been dealing with that site, it's funny how life has its turns because it used to be an open war going on with neighbors and they had these pre-existing uses and noise issues and permits and how many permits they did or didn't have on the property. And so it's an end of an era.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's really true, you know. I, well, I guess we could always put a shopping center on top of it at some point.
All right, well, thank you very much. We'll be back on the 28th with consent agenda item. Have a good day.
I guess there's nothing more for us at the work session, so we'll come back at 10 o'clock.